The Cedar Springs. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council. We are gaveling in at seven twenty Thursday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. And you see the note that we started late because we had a special meeting prior. For all of you, we're all going to say the pledge again.
Okay.
For all of you who are here who would like to say the pledge, if it's hard, it's okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. And I'm a high school teacher, so I am all pledged. I am super pledged today. Because I've done it twice in the last half an hour. All right. Uh, roll call, Ms. Atchison.
Here.
Mr. Gross.
Here.
Ms. Hamel. Ms. Nixon.
Here.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. It's all good, Rose.
I think parent teacher can't be.
Uh, Ms. Race.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Mayor Conley is here. We are here. We are here for it. Uh huh. Life-saving and meritorious conduct award presentation. These fabulous people, in recognition of your life-saving actions at the scene of a motor vehicle crash on January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three in Cedar Springs, Michigan, your outstanding efforts gave someone another chance at life. The city of Cedar Springs recognizes and appreciates your dedication to the Cedar Springs Fire Department. Never forget the difference that you make. Sean Polchop, David Barnes, and Paul Foltz. And I know you're not. Go into the crash cars that we are trying to climb out of. And they save our lives. So, thank you for that, gentlemen. Mr. Barnes, Toby.
Madam Mayor, if I might, real quick, David and Sean have twenty-five years this year of service.
Wow.
Wow.
Paul has headed for fifteen.
Wow.
Not something that goes lightly, as Mr. Gross could tell you too. A lot of training to get to this point.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I also know Mr. Barnes is responsible for a lot of the grants that we've gotten. So not only does he save lives, he writes grants.
Oh, my gosh.
Equipment.
Thank you.
Tired Fire Chief.
Current Fire Chief.
I do have a very random question. Now that no one can get their picture in the post, how do you decide who buys the donuts?
Party.
Uh, very good.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Nice work.
Stick around if you want, or you can run off and save more people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Welcome to. You're welcome to stay, but do not feel obligated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Skinner Field Annual Update.
Yay.
Yay. We're so happy to be hearing from you. And you're looking well. You're looking well, Mr. Kiphart. Like, I don't know if you're looking out or lost weight, but you're looking fabulous.
A hundred and twenty pounds less than last time I saw me.
Ah.
Wow.
Little different. Um, what happens when I've got my fourth granddaughter on the way?
Woo.
My goodness.
I decided I wanted to be around for him, so.
Congrats. Good for you.
Yeah.
Okay, so you guys get a copy? You got a copy, I assume? I guess I didn't care.
Oh, it's in the package.
If you, I didn't know if we want to start with like, you have any questions off the report first, or?
Mr. Kiphart, I mean, the numbers in the report are in the numbers in the report. I think what they're looking for is just kind of an oral update of how things are going, what you put your money on, what you're looking to do in the future.
Okay. Well, our expenses don't really change year to year. Uh, within, so what's in there is kind of what it is. Um, when it comes to additional fundraising, we kind of do that on a by need basis. So like, for instance, this year, one of the things that's on our radar is to get the, the storage barn on the backside of the property sided. Uh, we've got a quote for about twenty-four hundred on that. We're going to get a couple other quotes as well, but I mean, twenty-four hundred is definitely reachable. Um, so we'll put together some different fundraising things throughout the year to try to have that done by fall. Uh, other than that, an addition this year is, and that's in there on the events as well, CASA finally, several years of trying to get together with CASA, finally had a partial fall season at Skinner. They had three games on Friday nights. Cedar Springs Soccer Select.
Oh, Cedar Springs area.
I know, seriously, I'm missing it. It's a soccer program, okay? Um, there's AYSO in town and there's CASA.
Right.
Um, and they, one of their, and I'm not a soccer person, so I'm going to say that it's the younger group. It's the younger group.
It's the football, not the.
Well, the younger girls group, and I don't know if there's a U something.
Yeah, there, that's how they go.
Then you know. Um, they practice there Monday, Tuesday, and I'm sorry, Monday and Wednesday this week, or this year, this last fall. And then their middle group, which would be, I believe, the fifth, sixth grade-ish group, uh, had games on Fridays three times. Um, and now they're going to make it a more permanent thing, so, uh, and they've also added a spring season. Okay, so starting here in a week, they're going to start practicing their three nights, one, two, three, four nights a week, weather permitting. And weather permitting, meaning obviously you can't be freezing, and also that it's not a mosh, you know, all mushy out on the field. They'll practice outside the fence if that's the case. Um, and then they're going to do, they have a game schedule, which I think I put in there. I don't. End games this spring. Yes. And then they're going to continue their fall season and add another team to the practice schedule, another age group to practice. So they're really going to start utilizing. And football is what it is. They've been there for years and they're going to continue their, their, um, flag and speed agility during July, and then their tackle program starts in August, September, October, and.
That's like the seventy-eighters or the.
No, that is, and interesting lineup. That is, um, it used to be third through eighth grade. Middle school has broken off and is now part of the middle. It's a middle school sport.
Oh, okay.
However, two years ago, we introduced KQ program. I like to call the bobbleheads, the little kindergartners with the, you know, so kindergartners through second, uh, um, tackle program. And that's been pretty popular. They've had, they had, uh, fifty-five kids.
Wow.
Yeah, in KQ, um, last year.
You can't get that many for a high school team.
We didn't have that many at the third, fourth grade level. I mean, so, I mean, they're like really coming out for that, you know?
High school's like not running football in a lot of places.
Oh, yeah, they can't get, they can't field freshman teams. I'm actually the middle school coach now, so I don't coach at the U level, but I'm like the field.
Yeah. So that's interesting.
Yeah, so they're falling off more and more. Well, and then baseball here in town, of course, anyone familiar with baseball knows that they started fall ball now. So that cuts into the, the older kids a little bit.
And people can, people can walk the track. I think that's the thing.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, it's, we keep it open. It's open to the public because that's part of what we do, so, um, you can come out and walk the tracks. They can, they, um, families can use the field as long as they're not restricting it from other people using it.
So if you want to take your kid out there with a ball and
Anytime.
toss it or kick it around, you can do that.
Exactly right. Yeah, yeah. As long as you, the only time we require any kind of rental is if you're going to shut it down from public use. So like when they're having football games, they're, they're obviously, they're, they're, they're kind of privatizing it for that event. Um, we've had several, uh, groups contact us and say, oh, well, I'd like, you know, we want to go out there and play a little flag game for, for, you know, my kid's birthday. Well, how many of you are there? Ten? I mean.
As long as you don't care, there's other people out there.
Yeah, I mean, other people are going to be out there. I mean, and they may want to join in your game. I mean, I, you know, I don't know, but.
Come with extra cake.
Yeah, if I'm not, if I'm not opening the bathrooms or locking down the field for your, for your use, then yeah, you can go in there and do whatever you want.
Okay, questions?
I understand the situation with the adult teams. Because we've had problems with them off and on, even when I was involved. Uh, language actions, whether they kept it up or they didn't. Would that eliminate the possibility of adults wanting to create a flag football, uh, league or, you know, a grouping? Because it was discussed at one time, there was a group of adults that wanted to, they wanted to participate in football, but it was more like a flag. Uh, so if we were going to eliminate adult athletics out there, would that eliminate that as it's being discussed now?
So, Mr. Kiphart contacted me a couple weeks back, uh, because there are adult teams that are interested in using it. As you're aware, I stumbled upon some of these adult games and they were not what we wanted. People drinking and smoking marijuana in the parking lot, using profane language, throwing, you know, the field in the bathroom or whatever.
We had some police calls.
We did have a incident with police. So, um, I did receive another phone call this past week, and I'm basically trying to vet program that this person is, you know, offering. Um, you know, if I hear that they play in Eldin or something, and I go call the Eldin City Manager and their Parks and Recreation Director, and they say, oh, yeah, they're angels and everything's great, maybe I won't have an objection at that point, but, um, as far as I can tell, you know, this is still part of the same program that was there. Uh, and as far as I'm concerned, I don't want them using the city.
Uh, just from my observations when I was involved, I'm not certain it's always the team that is playing here is the problem. A lot of times, it's the other teams that are coming in to visit. And, uh, they bring their beverages and whatever their smoking habits are with them. Uh, and that was, that was part of where the problems were at, and they've, they were ruining a good thing for local people. And that's why I was wondering if it, if it's gone that far, or if it's still possible that whether it's the, uh, adult-level football teams or whatever, it's, it's still.
Well, and, and, you know, when, when I started forming Friends of Skinner years ago, it was to preserve the field for the kids, you know? And we wanted, and, and our lease says that we had to open it up to any public kind of group, uh, and, and make it, you know, accessible to them to, to lease out if, if it was, I don't know the language, of course, I'm sure he does. Um, but what was happening with the adult leagues is exactly what City Manager said. It was, you know, the marijuana, um, obviously I'm not a fan of, but whether it's legal or not, it's not legal on the park. It's a kid's field. They're doing it in the locker rooms. They're doing all these kinds of things. And then when we get police calls, all of a sudden it strains our relationship because then the city is like, what's Friends of Skinner doing? What can I do? I mean, if we leased it to them, I'm not the police, and I'm not, I, I can't control it. So I actually, uh, uh, came to the City Manager and said, hey, we would like to not approve those. We don't want to be responsible for those. Um, we will make it happen if the city is okay with it. So we kind of, I would say, put it off on you.
Yeah.
So if you guys approve it, fine, we'll make it happen because it's city property and we're running the field and we will make sure that, because I love football and I would love to see the games go on if they can be done safely and we, and, and appropriately.
Yeah, there's. There were actually like violence issues. I mean, it wasn't just that there were people drinking or.
There were threats of violence and there were, you know, fights and this and that. It, it, no, I don't know if we're allowed to call it this, but it's, it's a kid's stadium as far as I'm concerned.
It's a public, it's a public park.
It is.
And it is part of the park, and that's the problem, so, uh, and that's why it's just quite, you know, if they were to organize like football or even, even a ladies team.
And I think, I think, well, we had a semi-pro, uh, women's team out there at one time. I think we had far less problems um, as far as the, the, the police were concerned, but anyway, but even then, there was still stuff in the parking lots and whatever. It's, it's, um, anyway, so he, the City Manager is going to vet these programs now that come in and decide whether or not they want them to count first.
That's fine.
But, but I know what you're talking about. You're talking about like some of the USA football programs. Those are far less, um, they're, they, they tend to be more, um, organized and less, there's, there's less of that.
Doesn't just, doesn't function on testosterone.
Right. It's no one thinking they've, they've got a shot to, maybe a scout's going to be there. You know, it's, it's more recreational.
Whoa.
I guess.
I guess. And I know it's not because you're heavy. You like lost weight.
Maybe broke your arm again if you're still here.
So anyway, yeah, I'm, I, you know, we'll, we'll obviously, um, I'm a fan of the semi-pro games, not a fan of the aftermath and not a fan of the elements that came to town. And most, and, and you are right, our local teams are the problem. Fortunately though, you're going to have visiting teams come in. Who else are they going to play? So that's the problem.
For what it's worth, I'm happy to see soccer using the field. I'm, I'm happy to see an expansion of use. Um, youth football is great, but you know, any safe, effective public use, I think is a, a good thing.
And don't forget the cheerleaders.
Cheer, well, yes, sorry. They use it as well. They use it as well. I kind of lump them all together as a Rocket program.
Yeah.
The Rocket cheers, it's, it's, it's game days. And as a matter of fact, they, um, they've started coming over and practicing on the track too, which is good. I've asked them to do that for years and for whatever reason, they just, they got used to not doing it when it was school run. People weren't supposed to, so they always practiced over in Morley Park. I don't think that's just an old habit, and now they're.
It's a great place to walk. Like, I, when I had a baby with colic, had to walk for hours and hours in a sling. It's a really nice, I mean, it's easy on the feet because the track is, you've done a wonderful job with maintaining it. And, you know, the baby that I walked is going to be sixteen, so it's been a hot minute, but, 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 um, you know, I.
I run on the track pretty regularly throughout the summer, and there's lots of people out there doing their power walk and other people running, so it's a great resource for the community, and I, I thank Mr. Kiphart and his organization for helping maintain that.
Yeah, it's been huge.
That's it.
Well, I just wanted to say I appreciate your hard work and dedication to this organization and, uh, being the OG. Um, you've done a great job, and, uh, I think on behalf of the council, we would say we really appreciate you.
Yeah, how many years is this been now?
We're approaching ten.
Wow.
Yeah, because we renewed it to five. Um, we've got, yeah, so seven, eight, about eight, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, it was like a whole city manager ago.
Oh, yeah.
Is that a time skill now?
Yes, it is. Oh, yes, it is. For those of us who are on, who are on like our third or fourth city manager, yeah.
Start throwing my pens. Is that a?
That was one city manager ago. We had one before that. So. So, yeah. Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions? May the force be with you. You are welcome to stay, but do not feel obligated.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, then at this time, there's, you don't have anything else for reports or awards of people that we need to get out that we should put?
I could get up and talk if you want, but.
They gets to leave that we should put in the front because they need to leave. Okay, public comments. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the City Manager for action. If after communicating with the City Manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. You are not required. You again have an opportunity? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Madam Mayor, the library director is attempting to get into the meeting. I think she's perhaps in the first meeting's link, not.
Ah.
I'm trying to get her into it, so if you would defer for a few minutes while I hear this.
Sure. We can even, we can also come back. If there's, is there anybody else on Zoom?
There are members of the public.
So would anybody else that's on Zoom wish to speak? Can you raise your hand or unmute yourself? Anybody?
Okay, Madam Mayor, I think that during the intermission, you're supposed to dance.
You want me to dance? I have a dance minor in college.
Go ahead. Go out there and twirl around a little bit.
I have a dead president, I, I have an ex-president and a dead former senator that say I am highly qualified to teach dance for high school credit. If you are feeling so inclined, would you like to fox strong?
No, thanks. You might be qualified, I'm not.
I'm qualified to teach you. Um, could we allow the library director to come speak to us after while we move on to adopting the agenda and?
I've just sent the link. How about you do that, and then when the clerk sees her, we can go back to.
Because we have no public hearings. Um, so I would like to make one addition to the agenda, and I think I told all of you, um, or at least most of you, that this is a thing I wanted to do, which was to add, um, Mr. Tim Smith to the agenda to be added to the library board. He's going to go into the seat of Karen Ringler.
Where are we going to put that?
Um, I was going to add it to the consent agenda.
Okay. It would be motion E?
Sure. Especially since D is accepting Ms. Ringler's resignation, I, which I always think is highly interesting. Like, what if we decided not to accept it? Does she, is she not resigned if we know you have to stay? So I think that's not a thing, but, but, um, and then Mr. Smith is present, so.
Okay.
And Mr. Smith is a manager for a bookstore.
Nice.
How wonderful is that?
So, um, I'll make the motion to accept the agenda with the changes. Thank you.
Okay.
Back up.
All those in favor?
Conley, if you could clarify your exact language for items.
I am adding a motion to add Mr. Tim Smith to the library board.
That should be under action.
Appoint, not add, appoint to the library board.
Under action, not consent, then?
Well, we have the rest of them. The rest of our appointments are on the consent.
Okay, okay.
Don't bring him up and grill him to your heart's content.
Yeah, if you want to have a conversation with him, you can.
Call you later.
He can tell you about all the great books that they have, the bookstore that he manages.
The motion I have is motion to appoint Tim Smith to the Cedar Springs Public Library Board. Want to add anything about?
I, well, and I'd said, we can, to, um, the remainder of the seat held, remainder of the term for the seat held by Karen Ringler. And then we have the other board. I still have more boards, but I interview people before I. So I got more, but.
I will make that motion with the changes.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. That we have an agenda adopted. Are you still trying? I was going to say we can move on to, now that we have an agenda, we can move on to the consent agenda. Oh, yeah, you want a roll call to adopt the agenda?
Thought that was the motion that was made to accept.
She's asking Rebecca what she means.
General, you guys do a roll call for the consent agenda?
Right, but weren't we adopting the agenda?
I am sorry, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I was going to say, we were adding to the consent agenda.
Mike.
We were adopting the agenda, right?
Yes, you're right. You're right. Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
It is, it is a little wacky. Um, and we don't usually add things to the consent agenda. If anything, we take something off. So, but, um.
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
With the amendment?
With the amendment. Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to add that I'm super excited for, for you. I think you'll be a, a good. Oh, am I?
Yeah.
Yeah. Me too.
If, uh, that was the appropriate time, I'd like to thank Ms. Ringler for her service.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, wish her and her husband well.
Yes.
Oh, for sure.
And I'm working on a certificate in cake. Because that's the thing I usually try to do. So with that, any other about the consent agenda before I call the roll? Any other discussion? All right. Roll call. Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. We have a consent agenda, and you are on the library board. Moving on to, do we have Ms. Howe?
Uh, did send her the link.
Okay.
Oh. Would you like to do the oath now?
We can do the oath now. That would be lovely.
Get her done.
I said that Mr. Smith would be here, and I had asked the clerk in the event that you all approved this for.
Very efficient.
It's official now. You can't get away. Never mind. I want to rescind my vote. I didn't know he was lefty.
Yeah.
Left-handed people are the only people in their right mind.
Hmm, my mom's a lefty and he's a weirdo.
She's a weirdo.
Actually. I forgot this was public. Sorry, mommy.
Sorry, mom, I just called you a weirdo. All right.
Don't put that in the minutes, Rebecca.
Madam Clerk, please strike from the minute that Ms. Hamel called her mom a weirdo.
She's in Puerto Rico, so good luck.
I'm flying for a school trip to Puerto Rico next week.
Okay.
Forgot that was on YouTube. Oh, my gosh.
Oh, yeah. All right, moving on to action items. Yes, it's a full moon. Yes.
Library director has appeared.
All right.
The City Manager totally did not send her the long wait.
Oh.
I apologize.
We love to hear from the library director.
Just, Tammy, can you hear us? If so, unmute yourself or ready for your public comment?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, it's good.
Our favorite library director.
So, some really fun things to share with you tonight. The first thing is, is that on, um, March twenty-second, we are going to have a therapy horse at the library for kiddos to come and read to.
A horse? Did you say horse?
I did. I said horse.
Got a horse, of course.
Yes. Absolutely. So, if you have kiddos, have them come on out and read to the horse. Uh, that's, we're very excited about that, so we're looking forward to that. So let's get on to what happened at the library last month. Uh, we had two hundred and thirteen people attend family story time. We had five babies, one toddler, and four adults attend baby story time. We had fourteen kids and thirteen adults uh, attend music and movement story time. We had twenty-two participants in the I Spy. We had a cupcake. We had a cupcake wars. We had 20 participants and three celebrity judges, two being from Busy Moms Bakery and one from the Upper Room Coffee House and Bakery. We had rhythm circles and Take Your Child to the Library Day. We had 13 kids and 11 adults join us for that. We had 17 participants at the Winter Bird Feeder Class. We had 18 participants for the Stuffy Sleepover. And if you look at the library's Facebook page, on February 24th, you will see that the stuffies spent the night and they got into a little mischief at the library. You'll see lots of that. We had a live storytelling workshop. Four participants came to that. We had five attend the writers group, five attend book club, 24 blood donors, 44 attended our crafter nooners, and we had 83 attend the enhanced fitness and nine participants in our weight loss competition. We put a message out on Facebook and asked the community if they would like to be able to come in and work on a community puzzle at the library. We got an overwhelming yes. We have the, had gotten some donated puzzles and they are out and the community is actually working on them. We are still looking for friends of the library, so if you know anyone who would like to be the library's friend, we would love to have them coming soon, probably this fall sometime. I met with a local bus tour company and they are working on getting a bookish bus tour for patrons, so stay tuned for that.
Ooh, this sounds like it's up my alley. The book nerd mayor would love to hear about that.
Okay, well, when I have more details, I'll let you know, so stay tuned.
Okay.
I have, yeah, I have two questions. Uh, what time is the therapy horse?
It's gonna start at 6:00 PM.
And my second question is, what does being a library friend entail?
It depends on what kind of friend you want to be. So, if you, if you would like to be on the board, it would be, you know, taking one of the roles, vice president, treasurer, secretary. Or if you just wanted to be a friend and attend the meetings, that would mean helping plan, um, book sales, helping to support library events, advocating for the library. Or you could just be a friend and do those things and give a donation. So it all depends on what type of friend you would like to be.
And you need all of the, all of the things, right?
Yes.
Because we currently have a friend?
We have a friend. We have a friend. We're looking for less more friends.
Friend does mean a friend.
So if Jeff, if, if Joe and Beth Marquini are listening to this, we started the Friends in 1999. We should probably get on that, the Marquinis.
It would be lovely.
Okay, anything else?
That is it for me.
Madam Mayor, I do have one question.
Sure.
Ms. Howe, do you have any Disney themed puzzles for the kids?
We do. By a generous donation.
Are, are you still accepting donations of complete puzzles?
Yes.
So if people have puzzles, um, especially if you were busy doing those during the pandemic and they're now sitting on a box in your house and you would like to donate them to the library, they are looking for donations of gently used puzzles with all the pieces?
Preferably all the pieces, yes.
Can you, can you check puzzles out?
We have not thought about that, but we certainly can look into that.
Did you say that? Oh, good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe no more than 200 pieces, because you'd have to count all the pieces when you got that.
Yeah, that's the thing.
Unless you read it.
Unless you won't read it.
Anyways, that's fine.
Okay. Anything else for the library director?
Thank you for hanging in with us, Cammy.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Just think you're amazing.
Thank you.
Moving on to action items. Action item A, 2023 Social District that would be expiring May 12th, 2023. A motion to approve resolution 2023-05, a resolution approving and recommending Michigan Liquor Control Commission consideration and approval of certain licenses for social district permits pursuant to Public Act 24 of 2020. And a motion to approve resolu, I guess, we'll start with that one.
So these are both related to the social district, which has been ongoing in this community now for years. Um, it's essentially the same that you saw last year, only slightly modified from the first year. Uh, the only real question at this point is the days and hours and time you guys want to allow this. Uh, the DDA made a recommendation and that's what I'm recommending to you guys. Um, I'm sure, I'm sure Sergeant Pope's been talking about this, but we haven't seen any problems in three years. I know this board has been very conservative on this, but, you know, I think there's a lot of events. I think there's a lot of hot Sunday afternoons in, uh, July that somebody might want to grab a beer and sit in the park. The DDA board has recommended, I believe, every day of the week, um, I believe from about 12 noon until about 10 PM, which of course covers the concerts in the park. Um, and the only exclusion that I've specifically written into this is for the week leading up to the Red Flannel Festival, because of course they do have their own beer. We also don't want people necessarily walking around downtown with a beer all day on red flannel. So I bring it to you guys for your consideration. I know it's the first time you're seeing it, but it's not a new thing.
We're just changing the schedule.
Right, and we had talked about this.
Yeah.
At a previous meeting.
We did.
Changing these hours, so it's confusing.
Well, and I think Mr. Ringler has specifically requested that we expand. And I think, um, Ms. Jody from the, yes, from the Redbird, had also said that it would be helpful to expand.
In addition to there being virtually no problems in the past, um, Mr. Ringler's intimated to me that part of the issue is people will know that a social district exists, show up and want to purchase a beer. I think last year it was Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. They show up on a Friday looking to buy a beer to go to the park and they'd be told no. And they'd get mad at the brewery because of what the city did. Um, so that's at least part of his argument.
Sure.
You know, and again, there is built to, within these, um, resolutions as permitted by state law, that if we do identify problems, we can hold a hearing and, um, not reneg, we can, you know, get rid of the social district.
Rescind.
All sorts of R words in my head, I just didn't have the right one. Um, so, I, I don't see as a problem, uh, if you'd like to hear from Mr. Pope's.
Any comments?
Yeah, yeah.
And it's just all consistent. You don't have to be like, is it Friday at 3:30? So, other, do I have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve resolution 2023-05 and the 06 looks very much the same.
Uh, they're very similar, but they're different.
Okay, well, I would make a motion to approve resolution 2023-05, a resolution approving and rec, and recommending, that, that one.
Support.
And so, I'm sure the clerk is just as confused as I am. It sounded like you were saying both at the same time.
I was going to, but then there's, you said there's some differences, but I felt like we've discussed this whole thing.
So they're, they're all part of the same thing. Uh, I need them both to be approved of to allow the social.
So we can do them together or we can do them separately?
I'm, I, a suggestion would be separately, because they're two different.
So we have aye right now.
Yes, so I, I'm, I'm.
And 2023-05 as presented. Any discussion?
Ms. Atchison, that was support from you.
Yes.
We gotta have a discussion first.
Right, which is what I said, a discussion.
Um, I still haven't really found out if this is gonna be 365 days a year or a certain season or.
I haven't asked that question.
Okay.
Um, I, I did actually think about that while I was drafting it and the answer is, uh, if you guys approve tonight, it theoretically starts tomorrow. It excludes the week leading up to Red Flannel Day and the date after Red Flannel Day. And then it begins again until I believe December 31st. Uh, we could certainly change the limit that, but that's kind of a council decision.
I feel like it would, I mean, when they're doing the mingle with Kris Kringle, people who want, you know, a hot beverage, a hot toddy.
Molded wine.
Yeah, so, you know, mulled cider. I don't, I don't have a position on it, but I know that it's a thing that Dave serves.
I don't see anything written about, uh, confining it at, you know, during the red flannel season with the beer tent. Is it, is it?
That's what he just said, the dates.
It, it is on, it was in the pack.
Yeah, okay. Um, I'm real not, really not super happy about having open containers alcohol consumption in our parks all day long. I can see late afternoon or happy hour type of a thing, but, um, you know, that's, everybody else has to.
Just to be clear, because I know that's not always, um, interpreted this way by the public.
Mm-hmm.
You can't just grab a 24-pack from the liquor store and go down to the park.
Mm-hmm.
You still have to buy the alcohol from the restaurant and have it in their container.
Mm-hmm, it's got a cover.
So, now, I'm not stupid, you know, you take a six-pack, hide it in your jacket and keep refilling the beer, but.
They do that now.
But the point is, uh, this is supposed to help the local businesses.
Right.
Um, and also, I mean, who's drinking Bud Light when you can go to the brewery, really?
Uh, it's plenty of them down there at the.
They're wrong.
Well, yeah, but they're doing it, so.
Well, but they can still.
We haven't had any problems.
We haven't had any problems.
The social district doesn't cover that and they're still gonna do that anyway.
Well, I still.
Specifically has to be in, I mean, that's part of the law for the social district is it has to be in that designated container. It's, I mean, like, if you've been to one of the concerts, you, you go to all the concerts in the park, you've seen the.
Sure.
I mean.
I've seen wine bottles and all kinds of stuff.
Those aren't necessarily covered by this.
Right.
Absolutely not covered by.
Yeah.
Right.
But I'm saying you've seen the containers from the businesses.
You know, I brought my containers over there more than once, but.
Repurchased, correct?
Right, but I just.
She does, like, she said to me, I'm walking over to the brewery.
I just, I'm just not comfortable with opening up our park to alcohol consumption all day long. That is all day long.
From noon to.
Well, starting at noon is not all day.
Well, it's when most of the kids are out playing around. That's just my, just my, how I feel about it. Afternoon, mom and dad are around, uh, happy hour type thing. And I want to support the businesses, but I also, you know, there's some community gatherings that would maybe not appreciate having folks down there consuming alcohol.
Well, I'm assuming it can't be on Sundays, because they can't sell alcohol on Sundays.
Oh, yeah, they can.
They can't, so under Michigan's blue laws, I think it's you can't sell alcohol before it's allowed on Sunday.
Noon on Sunday, I guess that's right.
Theoretically, state law also doesn't allow, uh, anybody to buy alcohol on December 25th.
Yes. Yeah.
Which I have tried to do, they wouldn't sell to me.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, there are restrictions, but, uh, and Ms. Powell, I don't want to debate the issue. I, I like a beer occasionally.
Well, sure.
I don't get rowdy, I don't dance on my, you know, on the benches with the, whatever on my head.
Mm-hmm.
Drinking alcohol, alcohol, not the same as being rowdy and disruptive and the other things, which are also prohibited under.
And this is the motion that's on the table.
Right.
It's, yep, and it's, I, I'm fine with it, but everybody's.
Yeah.
Allowed to have their opinion and that's what we're talking about, yeah.
She could amend the motion to a different time or ask to amend the motion. The motion that's on the table is for noon.
I, I say we try it and see what happens, because we haven't had any problems.
Any other discussion? Mr. Gross? I was seeing your mustache wiggle.
I have, I have opinions also and mine flow is somewhat in the same direction of the roses. I thought, and I, and I may be corrected, uh, or maybe should be corrected, that there were some designated areas within the park that it was going to be allowed in rather than, okay, the playground where the kids are at.
So there is no playground in the heart of Cedar Springs?
Well, we are proposing it, right?
Which would be built until next year if they're willing.
Okay, so, but that's what I'm saying, if it's along with that, if there's a family gathering area in the future, so, and because we didn't have it in it, that, uh, that is the future, so, uh, I'd love to see it separate from that and have a designated area, but that again is not the way it's written. So, uh, that's why I was, I was thinking these things, but I probably wasn't gonna bring them up until I was asked, so.
So, you guys will recall, we've had conversations in the past about, well, okay, we could put up some caution tape and this, or you, you know, people drinking alcohol can sit behind and we'll separate them out that way. The staffing involved and.
Or a police, it's a nightmare.
Understanding that. Ugliness of the caution tape and all sorts of issues. And again, I don't have a vote here, but we haven't had any problems. We haven't, not so far.
This, this is for a year.
This is for this year, not for a year, but.
Right, it's for this year, so we have, we're not gonna have a playground this year. Like, we could revisit it if and when there's a playground, to exclude a designated area within the playground.
We almost certainly wouldn't allow people to drink beer while playing on the playground.
Yeah. Oh goodness.
I mean, at least now that we're chasing it currently.
Right.
Area or something.
Yeah. Okay, other, Ms. Race? Okay, Ms. Hamel? Ms. Nixon? Okay, I'll do a roll call. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on. Motion to approve resolution 2023-06, the resolution designating social districts that contain commons areas in order to allow certain on-premises liquor license expanded use of shared areas for consumption of alcohol pursuant to Public Act 24 of 2020. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll do a roll call. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on, discussion items.
So, uh, I'm sure the clerk would like me to tell you, uh, because of the cancellation of a planning commission meeting, this ordinance didn't actually get recommended to you.
Okay.
So, uh, it does say first reading, which is kind of technical language regarding, you know.
Right, because we have to read, hear them twice.
Fortunately, I don't think this counts as a first reading.
Oh, because they haven't handed it off to us?
Because there hasn't been a public hearing at the planning commission level, I don't think, and there hasn't been a recommendation. So, uh, for today's purposes, you can discuss it all you like.
We have to hear it twice after this.
Two more times.
Okay, so shall we now just move on?
Move on.
All right, since we're gonna talk about it two more times.
Yep.
Other than if anyone has a specific question.
And just for the audience, because I know this stuff is complicated, this is one of those weird ordinances which has basically no effect. As you guys will recall, about three years ago, we eliminated the B1 and RR zoning district of but, due to some problems with municode, uh, some of those terminology are still in the ordinance and so this is kind of eliminating those things that were already eliminated.
Housekeeping.
Yes, housekeeping, very much so.
But it has to be heard twice.
It has to be done twice.
So, all right, then moving on, communications, community event calendar, calendar, township letter regarding the Cedar Springs Library, adult use marijuana payments based on marijuana revenues collected. adult use marijuana payments based on marijuana revenues collected, and Wolverine Skyhawks letter to Plainfield, any questions, comments on any of this?
Is, oh, I was just gonna ask, is the, uh, the Wolverine Skyhawks are gonna move out or?
So, as you're aware, the city is trying to develop the West Street property, which is where their current flying field is.
Yes.
Giving them almost two and a half years of advanced notice that they would eventually be kicked out of there, uh, when that property gets developed. Uh, I'm still planning on if and when we do sell it to see if I can allow them to continue to use it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, until it's actually developed.
Mm-hmm.
Now, um, along with the library reading program and a bunch of other stuff, I, I've already told them that they have, I think, July event. I told them that I will guarantee them that they can still use it until that event time.
Okay.
This is, is they've been searching for two and a half years for the property, um, and I wrote them a letter of recommendation to the Planning Commission of Plainfield Township.
Mm-hmm.
Which is absolutely lovely and all very true, they have been as, great stewards of the property out there.
Yes, and community members.
And lovely events where they've invited the community out to watch their, their model planes and.
Something I would like to address is the adult use marijuana payments, it's slightly less than I think we expected last year, uh, if anyone's paying attention to the kind of the market, um, marijuana for whatever it's worth, uh, the price is cratered. It's, it's very silly in a, kind of a revenue sense. Marijuana was going for two hundred bucks an ounce, now it's thirty bucks an ounce.
Oh.
Um, a huge brand just announced, uh, that they're in receivership.
Oh.
Possibly bankrupting, and this is one that actually was here talking with us about potentially opening in our city, and now they're in receivership a year and a half later.
Wow, yeah.
So, the fifty-eight thousand per last year, it's down to fifty-one this year. Um, our budget is normally in pretty good shape now due to all the economic development we put on. But this city is still trying to dig itself out of some holes that have been created by twenty, thirty years of.
Yes, road maintenance and.
Aqua maintenance and deferred and all sorts.
Water treatment, yeah.
So, my plan and goal is to not treat this like, um, continuous basis money. I don't wanna add this to your expected money every year, my goal is to put this towards one-time CIP-type purchases.
Right.
Playgrounds, grant matches, absolutely not fire trucks. Some of these big expenses.
We love you, Marty.
I mean, a, as you guys know, the grant for the pocket park at Seventeen North Main where we obtained two hundred thirteen thousand dollars, uh, that.
We took the matching money for.
Yeah, so the match on that's gonna be three hundred thousand dollars, this is two hundred fifty thousand, which sounds like a lot, it is, but that's one project, which entirely subsumes what we're doing, uh, we're doing a huge sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Two sidewalk projects this year, we're doing a complete known fill of Main Street, including all ADA compliance. Um, so while there's members of the public who are gonna see that number and say, oh, yay, lots of money, splash pad this and this and then whatever, whatever, uh, a lot of this is probably spoken for.
Sure. Which we will get to when we talk about budget.
On, on March thirtieth, please come out, um, it's the most interesting meeting we have all year.
There's pictures.
There are, there's like slideshow.
There are, and Darla does an excellent job.
She does.
She's up there, so she heard that, uh, but yeah, I just wanna make sure that people are aware, it's a lot of money, but there's lots of things that we can pay for, and we're gonna try to do, um, but we'll talk about that more.
And sidewalks are a big deal.
And we also knew, which is one of the reasons that we, um, wanted to cap the number of businesses that we had in town, we knew that there would be this, this flattening of the marijuana market, that certainly some companies would not succeed because it was so saturated.
Yeah, we have beautiful buildings.
We absolutely do, that's very true.
Which was one of the manager's hopes for it.
Yes.
So, I mean, we've got currently six, we're authorized to have seven, but even if only two survive, we've had, what, four buildings that were heavily invested in for the business?
Yeah.
We've had some really amazing transformations, whether you like marijuana or not.
Oh, yes.
They invested a ton of money, and if they go out of business, bless their hearts, bless their cotton socks, but maybe we'll have a cute, you know, clothing store in their next.
Right, but I was just saying, this is why we didn't allow all of Main Street to just be marijuana businesses, even though at a certain moment in time, we could have sold all of those buildings, could have all been sold to marijuana hopefuls.
Yes, cause then when they all go out of business, then we have a bunch of empty storefronts.
Uh, yes.
And we still have some, no matter, I, there will be some, which for those of us who were concerned about people who are older, people with pain management having access, cause at the time we had to, like, drive to Muskegon, now I think that's probably gotten better, but ultimately, for me, the goal was to make sure that our people had access who needed it, without having, especially if the reason that you need access is because you're disabled.
Get around well, cause.
Right. And so.
I know there's been a lot of trepidation about marijuana businesses, but I will tell you with one hundred percent fact that the number one group of people who come in and talk to me about marijuana are senior citizens.
Right. Right, well, we, we learned that when we went and talked to the folks in Muskegon, and I said to the person there, what is the average age of the person who comes in to purchase marijuana? And they said sixty-three. I believe it, and I was like, makes sense. So, yeah, so I am, and I've had, I've had three people now that were originally not in favor of the city doing this, that have, um, contracted conditions that have required the use of it, or I, maybe not required, but their quality of life has been improved by using it, who have come to me and said, yeah, you were right. So, I'm thankful for that, I would also like them to be able to buy Tylenol, and I would like them to be able to buy, I mean, there's no end of. So, that's how I, as I say this to the hospice nurse, so, I'm glad that, cause marijuana was a hot mess for us for quite a while.
Yes, but yay.
Yay.
Yay, we get to do things, yay, we have money for projects that have been left for.
And sidewalks and.
Long time.
Yes. All right, any, anything else about any of the communications? Moving on to department reports, Mr. Manager.
Uh, don't have a lot, you know, it's been, it's been a rough week, I understand, you know, the public's upset about a lot of things. I think you guys did a very difficult, uh, job on Monday. I, I, I hope the public understands that.
On Tuesday, you mean?
Already?
It's, it's been a rough week.
I had, I had a different ugly meeting on Monday that had nothing to do with you all.
But, you know, we, we, we try to, you know, cat problems as a team, um, and there's, there's still ongoing issues which we're still gonna be resolving. But hopefully as a community, we can move forward and do what's best for the community, and understand that it's, you know, that this board and myself are, are, are doing our best trying to do what's best for the community.
Mm-hmm.
We don't always agree on what's best, and we do appreciate, uh, hearing people's opinions about what they think is best. I, I would ask, you know, members of the public, I mean, the members of the public tonight have been great, um, no catcalling, no jeering, you know, these are serious matters, and, uh, it's not a circus.
We, we also need to really honor the person that is speaking when they're speaking in public comment, and not interrupt them. And they need to be able to do that.
In any case, um, so, the only things I wanted to add, um, I think I joked about this last week, but it's such a great joke, so I'll say it again. I've been appointed as a master citizen planner by the MSU extension, so I do expect you to call me master citizen manager.
Does that mean everybody with the master?
Denied.
Denied.
I get that.
And well, I'm also a doctor, so, doctor, citizen.
Yes, doctor master, master doctor.
And technically, I've got a master's degree, so also master, master doctor. Uh, zoning administrator certificate as well, that's something I did.
Denied.
Denied.
Did on my own time, um, to improve my abilities with, uh, zoning administration.
Thank you for that. Good job, Mike. Department of Public Works.
Mr. LaRose?
Yep, I'm here. Um, the new well site went through the first phase of testing, everything came back okay, um, we got very low level of arsenic that we don't think is gonna be a problem, it's a common thing in, in groundwater. Um, other than that, we don't have anything to add, we, we're waiting on the DEQ permit for that, or Eagle permit, could be two weeks, could be six months, it's hard to tell, so.
And Mr. LaRose, just to make sure that the public knows that arsenic, uh, that's in the water is well within safety levels and well within safety guidelines and is a normal thing.
Right, it's actually in the consumer confidence report, it explains it all, so anybody that has interest can refer to that.
Um, it's a scary word.
It's a, it's a scary word, um, fortunately, uh, maximum contaminant level is like ten, and we're, we're way below it, it is a thing that naturally shows up in the system, so it's, it's not a, a concern.
And just to be clear, this is not a well that's even online yet.
Right, but we need it desperately.
We do, I'm just saying, but this is not, like, there will be more testing and there will be, like, we're not even there yet.
Where is this well?
It has to have, it has to be permitted through Eagle, so, if there was a problem with the well and the drinking water, it would never be permitted, so.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, like, we're not even there yet.
It will be a hundred percent safe when it, we're, when and if it becomes online, so.
Thank you.
Which is, we're in the process of trying to figure that out right now, as we move forward to add this well.
Uh, how many gallons per minute, uh, were they pumping out of there, do you know, on the test?
Well, the test is a hundred and fifty gallon, but that goes through in a, an equation, which equals, we're looking for eight hundred gallons a minute. Um, this well will have no problems between eight hundred and a thousand is what they're saying, so, we're, we are right where we need to be with that, and like I said, it, it's all right now waiting on the Eagle permit, which could be two weeks, could be six months.
We were concerned that it might not have that, right?
Uh, there was very, there was a little concern, but it's there, so.
All right, awesome. Okay, any other questions? Oh, I would just like to say, Mr. LaRose, you all are rock stars with dealing with the snow.
We might.
Which is coming.
We are getting some more, starting at ten o'clock tonight.
Yep.
There's a high likelihood of some stuff before tomorrow morning that could impact the ability of school buses.
What I think the mayor is saying is go get a nap.
So, I would just like to say, you did a phenomenal job of getting the seat, street, city streets cleared when almost nobody was able to get city streets, streets in general, cleared.
Leave here in the next thirty minutes, we can all get home before it gets wet.
Mm-hmm.
We done in five.
We're getting pretty.
Thank you.
So, thank you to you and your crew for that.
Thank you, and I'll let the rest know.
Police Department.
Yeah, we'll make this quick, um, do you have an update on the Sheriff's Department?
Sure.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, your building out there is looking pretty snappy.
Getting closer, much closer, we do now have a scheduled grant opening ribbon cutting ceremony scheduled for June first.
Okay.
The timeframe's like from ten AM to noon, the exact time, we don't know yet, but.
I'm assuming you'll give us a, like, a real, real thing?
Yes.
We can comment for you and.
Yeah, I sent the email to Mike, and I think he's gonna send it out to you guys.
Okay.
An invitation.
We got it.
Will we still have you here or our community?
My office will be at the new north substation there, however, I'll be over here a lot, they want my office, they need more room here, they said.
Oh, we want you here.
I don't wanna be there, I'll be hiding out here.
Good, thank you.
I can see how that rolls. He probably has better cooking. All right, then, Fire Department, Marty, big thank you to your folks for saving lives.
Time to thank the council for supporting us, um. During the ice storm, we had twenty-two calls in twenty-four hours.
I believe it.
Mixed mostly with fires and ice, and there was some medicals tossed in there, so, these guys put forth a lot out of their daily routine to keep up with training and stuff, and, uh, we appreciate the support we have gotten from the city, uh, on office staff, you, you people, it's appreciated, um. I have one thing, uh, coming on with the elderly people using marijuana, Mr. Womack said I couldn't do that.
You're not in pain, are ya? You're not in pain, are ya?
He's sitting right to my left. Again, I don't have anything else other than my report, and again, thanks to the council and staff.
Um, I've, I had a friend who had to have a call from you for a medical and was telling me how grateful they were at how quickly you responded. So, I'm grateful for that, and as a person who's had to have you come to my house at two o'clock in the morning and put caution tape around when a giant tree ripped the electric lines out of my car and, uh, out of my house and dropped a tree on my car, you were there. I'm super grateful that it didn't happen this time, um, but it's a thing, and it's a big thing. So, a lot of people's lives are greatly improved because you show up when they're having a really bad day, and a lot of lives go on that wouldn't have because you show up when they're having a really bad day. So, thank you for that.
Well, I, uh, excuse me, I've often stated that police, fire, paramedics, we don't see people at their best. If you see a paramedic, you're sick, if you see us, something's on fire, you see a police officer, you've done something wrong. So, having, having said that, uh.
Say, I've seen police with.
Well, for the most part, yeah, we don't see people at their best, and.
Yes.
It's been kind of one of my practices to treat that individual like I'd wanna be treated.
You all doing a huge, huge service to our community.
I add something to that.
Please.
Persons that he has mentioned are the ones that go out into weather that every other people, uh, everybody else chooses to stay home at and finds reasons for schools to be closed and so forth, uh, they're called into it and do respond. That, that's the biggest challenge that a lot of people have, is, is they talk about the rescues, the medicals, the police, and things, sometimes it's derogatory. But they're there for your benefit and, uh, looking out for your best interests, and, uh, things you see on the news and stuff now just is not warranted, uh, and it's not a full-blown epidemic like they make it seem, and, uh, I appreciate all of them for what they do.
I agree, Marty is not an epidemic. I would be there for an epidemic for Marty's. An stomach of Marty's.
I don't know what that is, but I'd like to see it.
Ball steam-powered fire engine?
It very well might.
So, they, but seriously, thank you, it's, what you do is invaluable, it really is.
I'll pass that on.
City Clerk.
Drop the mic, lady.
Um, I don't have much tonight, I, everything I have is in my report, but happy to answer questions if you guys have any. I would just like to say that you do a phenomenal job of supporting us with all of our questions about Robert's rules, about how things are supposed to go, about how, like, in what order do you need this motion, if we don't make a motion when we should, you're wonderful for that. I mean, that's huge, so I, it, it makes it so that I know we can make this all work.
Finance Director.
Good evening.
Gets to be her show a lot in a little bit here.
Yes, I've been working on the budget a lot, so.
I can tell.
Yep, we'll be ready by March thirtieth, though.
Any questions for Darla?
Can't wait. Can't wait.
You do, you do make the budget easily accessible. I've, I've been through a lot of finance budgets between the library, between the school board, between, you know, this is year fourteen on the city council, I think. You make a budget the most understandable and accessible of any finance person I've ever seen. It's, it's ridiculous how much you make it so that people can understand it. So.
That, that's the goal, I want people to understand it.
Right, so, so in addition to like knowing the complexities of all of it, you then also have, that's like a whole other skill, to then be able to make those complexities accessible to the general public, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hopeful that the biggest problem we have this year is that we're giving her too much money to play with. Couple weeks.
Yes.
What a problem.
What a problem. Code enforcement, building inspection, board and commission minutes. Council comments. I will start with Ms. Powell.
Okay, those big uh street flags that um we have available, working on getting those out, I think I'll take them down to the farmer's market for sale. If that goes, and um I've got a, took a couple over to the historical museum, historical society, and it got a note, says, dear members, thank you for the red flannel street flags, we are very happy to have them, they are beautiful. Thank you for thinking of us, Sharon Jeff.
You're always just on top of that thing, Ms. Powell.
They're a great bunch of people.
Yes, they are, we are very lucky to have the historical society and museum, we do.
Sure are. That's about it, I, I'm glad this was such a lovely meeting tonight, and may we have more.
Yes, Mr. Gross.
So you're coming in order here, okay.
Well, I usually go, I usually go this way, this way, this way, this way.
I want to repeat again that uh my appreciation for those that do the work that uh the rest of us assume stay at home and out of uh arms' way now, I used to be one of them, but uh uh I appreciate the fact that City Manager has gone through the courses that he has and, and received the accreditations that he has. I, like the rest of you, probably felt uh somewhat attacked at the past uh meeting we had by the group that was here, but I also understand their frustration and uh their concerns. As much, as much as that it was somewhat irritating, it was also enlightening at least to come out and speak rather than just doing it through Facebook, taking shots at people without uh being willing to face us, oh, but uh we work through things the best we can, like everybody else said, we don't always agree. But we'll work through things the best we can to come to a, a amicable decision, that's it.
Ms. Atchison.
Uh, once again, thank you to all the staff, and they make our job a lot easier. I love seeing um people and people here and listening and understanding what happens at the regular board meeting, not, not hearing what happens at the board meeting, like actually being involved and hearing everything and understanding, um, when you come to the board meeting, you get, you do get to hear the discussion, and you do get to understand a little bit more about, about the decisions that we make and what we use to make our decisions, um. Once again, like I said, at Tuesday's meeting, there is not black, there is not white, there's gray, I mean, and all the colors in the rainbow, I mean, there it's not one way or the other, we've got to be able to work together to um understand and to get things done. The more you fight each other, the less you get done, and then that makes things happen, um, like maybe um the library not being funded, or you know, not being able to be used, and, and people seeing, you know, it's, it's supposed to be a warm welcoming space, you know, not, not a space of chaos and, you know, and not understanding, so there are so many other avenues than fighting. You know, working together is always going to be the best attitude, like we work together to fund the library, to get a library. I mean, this community and other communities worked very hard for that to happen, so there's not a, not a reason to fight and, you know, get all upset, let's, let's work together, and um in everything that we do, so that's all I got to say.
Ms. Race.
I'd like to welcome Mr. Smith to the library board again, um, I think that it's going to be a, a great fit. Um, some fresh eyes is always good. Um, as I said on Tuesday, um, again, it's nice to have people here. There's a lot of comments out there that um people have, but I wish they'd bring them to us so that we had the other side of the story, so um, please don't hesitate to reach out to any of us, we'll be here to at least help guide you or get the answers that you, that you really need. And um, Mr. LaRose, good luck tonight, let's now get some rest.
We should bring cookies tomorrow.
I usually do buy them.
I was gonna say, I should buy some extra Girl Scout cookies.
Mom Gilt bought me two hundred and fifty bucks, dollars worth of cookies this year, so I have all the cookies.
Oh.
All the cookies.
I bought quite a few from your, your person.
Mom Gilt. Motivator.
But I could see how that could work. Ms. Hamon.
Oh, um, I just want to say again, thank you to our first responders, um, because they're very near and dear to my heart. Uh, congratulations again, I think you'll be a wonderful um asset, and I'm excited to work with you. And congratulations to Master Mike Womack. Certification, I'm very proud of you.
And for, just to note that no one thinks your mom.
Oh, I, I mean, she, no, she's a weirdo, she's.
He was giving you a moment.
I mean, she had me and raised me, so Apple doesn't fall very far from the tree, so, had to be perfect, sorry. Adore her.
Ms. Nixon.
Spring is twelve days away.
It is.
There will be dirt and plants and sunshine, even if it is not today. Thankful for that.
There are tomato plants in the house.
Most excellent. I'm, I'm busy killing seedlings already, I'm hard at it, so, but, but thank you.
I will have some to support.
Oh, good, after I've killed all mine, excellent. But, but thank you to the staff who consistently um puts together a organized and easily read agenda and package.
Before I give my comments, I just would like to make sure that there's a note at the bottom, March sixteenth, six-thirty, at the fire station workshop session regarding one-four-three-hundred White Creek Avenue, and on March thirtieth at six o'clock, the special meeting session regarding the budget. And we do the first, the budget can be, will be able to be seen online in its entirety, and um this is the first reading, we don't actually vote on anything, she presents it to us, and then we again, because it's very exciting, so we like to hear it twice. And then I would just like to thank this board who showed up without complaining, without being frustrated to try to work through a problem, and even if we didn't find a solution that solves the problem, you showed up. And you showed up, rolled your sleeves up, and said, let's try to figure out how to make this work. And I am unbelievably grateful for a board that shows up to do that. There is not a single time that I have come to any one of you and said, we have this thing, and I need you to come together to try to figure this out, that you haven't all said, all right, here's, here's a day, I can do this, and I'm exceptionally grateful for that. And I am very grateful for Mr. Smith, who I swear to God fell from the sky to actually be willing to jump into this with um serious qualifications about how libraries run, how bookstores run, how budgets work, how all of this, and we had a lovely conversation when I interviewed him the other night, so thank you, and thank you. And with that, just to clarify, Madam Clerk, we've had a question about whether or not we need a motion to adjourn. Okay, because that was the, you need a motion if you aren't at the end of the agenda, is my understanding.
Oh, just a minor correction, if you're at the end of your agenda and it's in your agenda.
Right, and it's on the agenda as an item.
Mm-hmm, right.
Which ours is, because I had some questions about whether or not we have ever actually adjourned, because I don't often take a motion, so apparently we are still in session all of the time from always.
Hard to know.
If someone would like to offer a motion, I will accept it, otherwise, we are adjourned.